Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Um, Mayor and Council have one addition to the agenda. I know I sent this out to you in advance. It's a request for an exemption from our city code, which is ninety-two point oh-one-nine, um, which is our public nuisance. Um, we could add that as item ten-point-five.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
Motion by Mary, second by Pat to approve the agenda with the addition. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. invocation Hutchinson, preacher. Good evening.
Let's pray. Thank you for this city. Uh, thank you for bringing us here. Uh, thank you for these elected officials and the people who serve this city. And I just pray that you would help us to draw near to you, uh, to be unified as a city, that you would help us to be provided for by you. And I just pray that you would help us to uh, be unified in this community, that you protect us, provide for us, and uh, be with each one of these people who are serving graciously, according to your will. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything to mention? All right, uh, we do have a guest, Mary Latch Sarah, with the Harrington Merrill House.
Mary wanted to introduce.
Mary, do you wanna kinda touch a little bit on what's?
Well, I will just tell you that Mary Latch Sarah is a descendant who is from the Harrington Merrill home. She now lives in Madison. She has a lot of memorabilia, a lot of wonderful things that could be in the Harrington Merrill home. And she's going to be presenting us with a few things. And she's a history buff, so we are blessed.
And I know, Mary, before, you guys actually were over at the Merrill. At Harrington Merrill. You guys were at the Harrington Merrill.
Yes, before this, we, Jim Fahey and Val, Macon Toon and I, were up at the Harrington Merrill home. And we gave her a little tour of the house, what we've done up there, the carriage house and the barn that's now moved. And she has a lot of good memories from that place, so have at it.
Thank you. I'm Mary Latch Sarah, and um, my mother, Doris Merrill, um, Latch, um, was, you know, she married my father, who was Arthur Latch. So you may be more familiar with Basement's Corner, which is um, down the street. So you have the, that, and then you have um, then you have the Merrill House up the street. So I was split, coming from the Twin Cities up to both of those residences. Most of the, so I've been water carnival, I've been, you know, through Hutchinson for many, many years. My family has a Lake Jenny property still to this day. I stayed with my sister last night, who owns the property. At any rate, that you've got two different views of Hutchinson. You've got somebody German, and then you've got, you know, the other side, you know, eighth grade education versus owning the Citizens Bank. So it was a very interesting, uh, growing up, but the one commonality was the food was excellent. Then you listen to pop music, and then you, you went up and had, Genevieve Wyng was of French descent, then you had the best lemon meringue pie in the world. And then you had tons of dogs, cockers and Boston Bull terriers and smoking cigars and drinking bourbon and playing cards and pinnacle and all that stuff. So I have that in my blood, you know? Even though I, I was raised in the Twin Cities, I was up here all the time. So at any rate, as I'm sixty-seven, I'm as cleaning house, and I have two millennial daughters that don't have a clue about history in general, that is a minor of mine. And I do have um, experience, I served in, well, I, I worked in DC for, I tried to get on with the Minnesota delegation. They said we're full, so I ended up with South Dakota at the beginning of the alphabet, because I used my sales experience, ABD, Abner. And so he was running against McGovern. They thought he was gonna lose. I got on as an alien, okay? So served there from seventy-nine to eighty-six, so I got that experience. Then got pregnant or got married, got pregnant, moved out of the area, was too busy, and then moved to Madison. And then basically couldn't keep my mouth shut, watched their liberal politics and ran for county board. They had thirty-nine supervisors, if you can imagine how long those zoning meetings that I was assigned to went ad nauseam, two years, it was just, I, I really respect you for serving more than one term. Really respect for the continuity. I got two things done, a Dade County tree board and something with adult porno, you know, windows designed for adult bookstores and that kind of stuff, but I was out after that. So I, I do respect what you did. What I've done is brought is two items that my mother gave me. And the description, I'll pass one around, and then the other one I'll just read, is that I had a Paris old report done in Madison, because I, I was lucky enough, when the estates were split up, you know, my siblings, I'm third out of four. They wanted cars or, you know, stuff like that. And I was like, no, I want those Marvel set, or I want that puzzle set. Or I want that, and, and the Merrills and the Harringtons, the Pendergasts, they kept everything forever. You know, they kept it in good order. So there's like, I'll pass the next list out. I brought you two items that would fit in your vault, if you had a bigger vault, I would have brought you more. So even though the price on this is small, so is your vault, so. So these are other items that I could be, there's no reason in the world why, you know, you can look and get inspired. There were things that were in the house. Uh, they don't know places that, this set, this was probably from England, and everybody's relatives came over to the United States because they weren't doing well over there, so it was brought in for some reason. If nothing is broken, but when I worked with Lawrence Winter, who was the city person on this, he was describing maybe eight or nine years ago shards of pottery that was found in the sister's little house. And you can imagine, I've moved three times, nothing was broken of eighteen pieces that I'm able to give you. These are eighteen-fifties, hand painted with the information from the Pendergast, so. That's all I'm willing to take out of the box that I reviewed the other eighteen pieces, but that's what it looks like. The other thing is um, a woolen blanket that was woven on a sheep bar in Maine. And this was before Minnesota was a state. And the problem with this, I have that cedar closet, but you can see that this is, it was sent to, not Hutchinson yet, but sent out here. And my appraiser has linked it back to, but even hand-stitched, not very moth-eaten. I have an attitude closet, but I don't need it sitting in my closet in Madison, Wisconsin. You're doing the, the most beautiful thing that I can ever think of, to preserve something that most cities wouldn't do. But, you know, I mean, I, you, has anybody have any questions for where this is going, or are you happy that I brought this down to you?
Yes.
Okay, so. Well, thank you for having me, as a member of the, I was given eight minutes, and I, I don't know if I'm over that or not, so.
You mentioned the Pendergast. Did you ever, they had a home out on the island on Hook Lake. Were you ever out to that? No? Okay. That just sold a few years ago for, you got the island and everything.
I spoke a little bit, and you know, somebody said to me, well, hi cousin, and I mean, I only knew the relatives that I was allowed to meet, you know? Your, your town was small, it was probably two thousand or less when my parents were growing up. People get a little profio, and so they only let the grandchildren meet who they were supposed to meet, you know? So, yeah. Yeah, no, there, it was uh, I don't know, but I, I really enjoyed Hutchinson, really. Being from the Twin Cities, Hutchinson was safe, sane, and, you know, a wonderful place to be. And I'm just so pleased you're, with your efforts for Historic Hutchinson, and that hopefully that younger people and people on the council will continue this.
So can we, can we ask, are you a real Minnesotan, or are you?
I am, and you can't get rid of this.
Are you a Viking fan or?
For a lot of years, it took me a while to get used to the Packers. I didn't, I never like Mary Alvarez anyway.
That was from, Mr. Savora is a Packer back.
He's our local Wisconsinite, so.
You are? What part of Wisconsin?
Uh, my hometown's like thirty miles south of Green Bay. It's called Chilton.
Chilton, okay.
Near Appleton.
Well, we have Aaron Rodgers. And, you know, so. I don't know. I, I was loyal to you guys for a long time, and I didn't like anybody in between for a long time, and then I actually started liking the Packers, but I've been there thirty years. I, I'm a slow warm-up, you know?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary Hutchinson, I guess I had a question with Historic Hutch, if, if, I guess, have they looked into vaults or anything like that with just, I'm not sure what they have for collections or what's coming in. I'm just thinking in the future.
That's, that's on our plate, and we know that we need to do something, you know? For now, these are two small items that we can store, but Mary has other things that probably.
I, I have two older brothers, uh, younger brother, older brother that have things as well. Uh, my groom is on Hutchinson, they were all surveyors. Edwards is an engineer. He's got one of their original surveying sets. There's, these are things that belong no place else.
Because obviously we've got the Harrington Merrill, but I'm, I'm assuming there, in the years to come, there'll probably be other pieces of historic nature from Hutchinson that people maybe look into to donate that, maybe of hu- huge value to historic societies.
Right. And Mary will have, what she's donating will have the value on it.
Right, and I'm the test piece for my family. So my brothers, you know, they'll, they'll see, you've accepted this, it's small in number, but that doesn't mean as people are dropping off, there's, it's not a change that might come out of the line, so.
Well, thank you very much, so.
Thank you, Mary. Safe journey.
Thank you very much.
I think I've got dishes.
Yes. With her, with her, not me.
All right, moving on, uh, citizens addressing the council. If anybody wanted to address the council, please come forward. Any regular approval of minutes? We have the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion approved.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, is, uh, boards of commissions, appointments or reappointments, uh, appointment of Jack Daggett to the EDA Board to December of two thousand twenty-seven. Reappointment of John Loftall to the Sustainability Advisory Board to May of twenty twenty-five. And reappointment of Bill Garber to the Planning Commission to March of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, B is approval of resolution number one-five-four-seven-three, resolution appointing the election judges for primary election. C is uh, consideration for approval of city airport property first right of refusal agreement with ASI Jet Egg LLC. Is the, of issuing temporary liquor license to the McLeod County Agricultural Association on August eighteenth through the twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Hutchinson Fire Department Relief Association on September tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And F is claims appropriation contract payments, register A. Anybody have anything they want pulled off? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, we have uh, approval of consent agenda two, claims appropriation, contract payments, register B. Chad, I believe you have a check on there.
I do, so I will abstain.
All right, entertain a motion for that.
Motion approved, consent agenda two.
Aye.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve consent agenda two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We do not have a public hearing, nothing under communications requests petitions, no unfinished business under new business. Summary view, and approval of the two thousand twenty-one audit comprehensive annual financial report.
Justin's gonna drive for me.
Pressure's on.
Apologize in advance, this isn't gonna be nearly as entertaining as the speaker before me, so, quick.
I don't know, you had us on the divorce.
Yes, I'm sure you were. So thanks for having me, uh, Mayor and Council. My name's Lane from Abdo. We're gonna go through the, the high-level summary here at the twenty-twenty-one financial statement audit and the results. Uh, we went or through this earlier at four-thirty at the workshop in more detail, so this is gonna be the, the summary presentation that we presented. So first we'll talk about the twenty-twenty-one audit results, our audit opinion. Uh, we provided a clean and unmodified opinion on the financial statements for twenty-twenty-one. That is what you want. We do not have any audit findings to report for the year. Uh, this is the twenty-fourth year, and twenty-fifth year you applied for the GFA certificate that has been received annually every year since nineteen ninety-six, has the highest level that you can receive for governmental financial reporting. The city did receive for seven-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars in American Recovery Plan Act dollars. Uh, there was no single audit required in twenty-twenty-one because those dollars were not spent. Uh, there's also no significant new auditing standards. A lot of those got pushed back due to COVID-nineteen, and a lot of those will be implemented for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. So some of the high-level results, the city's total net position increased by four-point-five million dollars during the year. Now, a lot of that in the governmental activities is related to increase in charges for services related to some of the culture and rec active activities that were now back ongoing in twenty-twenty-one, uh, during the year. Uh, there's also an increase in, in also some building permit and activity, building activity during the year that the city saw. Uh, the business-type activities, uh, was the main driver about three million dollars, a lot of that's due to increases in charges for services uh, related, uh, mainly due to the Hutch Public Utility side of things, uh, bringing those dollars into the financial reporting for the city. The general fund or the main operating fund of the city increased one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand dollars compared to a balanced budget during the year. Uh, as we mentioned, that's, was a, uh, significant factor related to that was some of the building permit activity. Uh, there was also a valuation of more than seven million dollars in homes constructed during the year. Uh, some cost savings for the general fund. There's some savings in parks and rec, uh, mainly, uh, due to decreasing staffing levels uh, during the year. Uh, and as a percentage of general fund liquidity, uh, it's a good to compare to the amount of budget expenditures and total fund balance represents about sixty-one-point-five percent, uh, which is above the city's fund balance policy of forty percent. Uh, the majority of the other special revenue and capital project funds do have positive fund balance, have continued to see um, levels and continued growth. There are a handful of deficits out there, mainly just due to the timing of when some of the grant dollars, uh, bond proceeds, tax increment, uh, are gonna be collected. A lot of those deficits will be, uh, funded by those future proceeds. Majority of the enterprise funds themselves, they also have sufficient cash flows to fund both operations and debt service payments, uh, and have healthy cash reserves to also, um, utilize, uh, to pay future capital costs as well. Uh, so that is my contact information on the last slide here. Uh, if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to reach out to me at any time if you have to answer them at that point, or if there's anything for me now, I can also answer or clarify anything else that council may have.
Once again, mainly for the public, um, there was a workshop prior to the regular council meeting where we went through this report in more depth, and I think, um, the easiest summary is that, um, the city is fiscally healthy at this point. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we should have a formal action to accept the, the financial report for twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve the audit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Ordinance number twenty-two dash eight-three-zero, ordinance amending chapter ninety-four cemetery first reading.
I think Mr. Olson will be taking this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, city staff, cemetery staff recently learned about a situation that, um, led us to take another look at our ordinance to make sure that, um, we can avoid any potential, um, memorials that would include obscene or vulgar or offensive language or art or, uh, things like that. Um, by having this in place, by having our permitting, uh, system in place, I think we can avoid some problems that other cemeteries have experienced with, uh, different, uh, either language or design, uh, different things like that. Um, you know, we have a lot of different families represented in the cemetery, and we need to be aware of, um, you know, what is generally considered obscene or vulgar. So, um, this first reading, I, I would just propose, um, there's some specific language in there that relates to that, but the majority of it is to clean up and correct some others. Uh, really what we're looking for is to, um, you know, make sure that any part of the memorial uh, would not include, uh, language, wreckage, um, artwork or anything like that. Um, and the way we would do that is, is you are required to get a permit prior to placing a memorial, so we'd see that at that time, we'd see that design. If there were any issues, we'd contact the family directly and have that conversation. Um, certainly if, if it came to it, you know, we may need to come and before you to approve or deny a particular permit. But, uh, ultimately it does, you know, rest with the city council to determine, uh, what is, um, acceptable and what is not acceptable. So, um, just hoping to not have this problem is really what, what this is all about. So we can make it very clear to, uh, folks who are inter, you know, get property and or lots and, and are entered there. So, any questions?
You know, the one question I had, and I, and I, I think the language is good and appropriate, is, and maybe this is more for for Mark when it comes to First Amendment rights and how that's, if, if there's any concern from us if we find ourselves in any violation of that.
Well, you know, there's always the concern when you're dealing with public property and people being able to express their opinions. Um, but generally cemeteries are deemed to be, um, able to be a little bit more controlled by the government as opposed to like the public square of the city where those types of, um, expressions of free speech normally take place. So I feel very comfortable with the language that John is proposing in the ordinance and our ability to, um, work with, um, people and their memorials as it goes forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John about it?
And make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
And the second reading would be twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
All right, ten-point-five, Matt.
Yeah, uh, Mayor and Council, thank you. This was an item that was added to the agenda. Um, we've got a request from the, the Crow River Golf Club. They have their annual, um, shootout, uh, this, this coming weekend, uh, at the, the golf course. And as a part of that, I'll be honest, I'm not completely sure what it is. I know it's a, it's a weekend-long.
It's a big tournament.
It's a tournament they have, um, but they're looking to have some of the, the users of golf's course actually camp their, camp their, use their RV to, to park over the weekend within their parking lot. Now, since that is own residential property, um, doing so would technically be in violation of our nuisance ordinance, and so the, the golf club has asked for an exemption for from the nuisance ordinance for, um, both three days, which is mainly the, the fifteenth and sixteenth of Friday and and Saturday night, but it would be, they'd be looking to encompass the whole weekend.
They talk about, you know, a few members. What are we talking? I mean, how many fish houses and and, uh, mobile homes are we gonna be having? Do we have any idea?
I know you've, they've spoken with you directly. I'm not sure if, uh,
There we go. Uh, my understanding it's, uh, probably somewhere around half a dozen or so, nothing like, I don't think they plan on all their members staying the weekend, but I, he's, the way it was proposed to me is that, uh, a few of them had expressed interest in doing that. Um, just a correction to, it's not actually in the parking lot, it's it will be in the gravel area next to their, um, their maintenance shed.
Okay.
So if you're familiar with their course, it's kind of away from the other residential properties that they border.
Cause I mean, I do realize it is a residential area. There are people's homes that butt right up to that. And are they gonna be able to have little campfires and sit out at night and?
Well, and I think that's pretty much up to you, right? Um, so I, I think you can put any kind of limitation on that that you would like. I would certainly, um, express or, I would let Mr. Parsons know whatever your concerns are and make sure that they stay within those.
Yeah, and I guess I would know, right now residential properties are allowed to have campfires. You know, I think that we're limited in, in size, you know, I think it's supposed to be three feet by, three feet by.
The, kind of the noise, all that would kind of cover that anyway, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I think my, if I'm being completely frank, my concern is, would be the noise.
Right.
That would occur after dark. So, um, if you're willing to grant this exemption, I think that it should also include
A time.
A, a quiet time. Go along with it.
And I agree with that, you know? You know, I know some of those people who live right, right there.
Yeah, I, there's, there, that, that relationship between the golf course and some of those, um, Yeah, I, there's there that that relationship between the golf course and some of those um. Residences uh has been a little contentious, to say the least at times, so.
I would be.
Few windows have been broke by golf balls.
I would be happy if we put a.
Like.
A timeframe on it, but we need to agree upon that.
What are you talking of, like ten thirty or?
Well, what time do wedding dances usually like eleven thirty?
Uh, eleven thirty midnight.
So could do eleven thirty if that's what they're kind of used to.
I think it's fair, if you want my opinion, I think it's fair to even ten o'clock would be fine because. My understanding is they just want a place to sleep. On site.
And and I guess I would note the request that came into us was for camping. There wasn't an exemption from the noise ordinance, so they would still fall under whatever current regulations are. Are in place for the for that property, so. So I don't, I don't even necessarily know if you want to address that and just leave it. What it'd be like for every other residential property and that in that neighborhood, so.
So this is verbiage, but like in the letter, it says mobile homes like that needs campers, right?
Yes, RVs. It might get to be a little bit of a costly uh weekend if they're moving into mobile homes.
Some of those fish houses cost more than my house.
Some RVs are as big as mobile homes now, so.
You know, it's the first time, I guess I don't have a problem with it, it's just.
Well, we just don't want your department to show up there because the neighbors are calling and saying.
Yep, um, and I appreciate that. Appreciate that, um, I think we have to be very upfront with them, what our expectations are from the city. And, you know, you maybe also want to put something in there that if they violate it night one, they're gone night two.
Do we want to limit the amount of units? Tom, you know, are they talking on on the south side of there, cause there's a big gravel lot, where as I know, it's my son's property butts to that. There's a big gravel lot on the south side, there's a small one next to their building, like very small, that wouldn't accommodate many campers at all. I'm guessing they're talking about the south side.
Again, I was told it was probably a handful or less. That people wanted to do it, if you wanted to limit the amount, that might be prudent, um. And I was told it's the gravel lot by their maintenance building.
Yeah, I'm guessing.
It's gotta be across the road, across the road from the maintenance shack.
No, that's what I mean.
That's what I thought.
Uh, I I personally, I think that this, they go ahead, but they have to make sure they follow the. The noise ordinance. And I, like you said, uh, you know, maybe. I don't know.
There'll be music playing Friday night anyway down the river song, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot going on this weekend. I said, yeah, the 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 request was to basically allow them to have campers in their in their property for extended period of time, which is really more than one day.
So Tom, do you think we should limit it to like eight units or?
Well, I personally think you should do whatever you're comfortable with, um, but I do know, like, as I mentioned earlier, that relationship between the golf course and those. Uh, neighbors has been contentious at best and so, um, if you may be. I guess, short, short answer that I've already made long, probably limit the number of campers they can have.
How about we, I would make a motion to have quiet hours at ten and limit it to eight units?
I'm good with that.
I'll second that. Motion by Chad, second by myself, uh, have uh limited to eight units and quiet time at ten. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, governance, uh, we do not have anything from minutes reports from committees and boards of commissioners. Uh, staff update, uh, John, do you have anything else for us? Chief Jefferson? Not yet. Mark, you got anything tonight?
Nope.
Uh, Dave, let's start with you tonight.
Were you gonna start with me?
Yep.
Oh, I thought. No, I really don't have, uh, just watch the weather and be safe, uh. Make water if you're outside, so. Enjoy it, summer is coming to an end shortly.
That's enough out of you. Pat, what do you have?
Uh, River Song this weekend, fifteenth and sixteenth, they've got, they do a good job, there's some great uh music. Um, go down and enjoy it, support the festival that is our home.
Um, Pat, why don't you mention, or maybe Chief Jefferson can, about the new route to get into it?
They do, they changed the entrance to where the new crosswalk has been installed.
That's Montana, correct?
Yep.
So you enter in Montana, like down towards the sanctuary.
Just before Sternwood, yeah, or after if you're coming from the east west. Um, so yeah, I think they'll they'll have good signage out there, so you'll be able to tell.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed they had that during the water carnival and it seemed like that worked out a lot better.
I think campers, if they're coming, they still go in the old entrance by Senex.
Yep, correct. Anything else, Pat? Harry, thanks.
Chad?
I have nothing extra.
Mary?
I don't have anything, I was gonna say make sure you get out and support River Song. It's a good little event. Dress cool, cause it's gonna be warm, also, uh, water, are we okay? Um, watering, there's no watering bans yet or anything coming down the tube, we're good yet? Alright, cause people have asked, you know, like, should we only be watering from, you know, before six in the, at six in the morning and after six at night? So, but we're okay for now.
I would say last weekend helped us, we had to get a monorail, so.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Pat?
Um, I guess just two things, uh, we do have primary elections coming up on the eighth of August and I know. We've done a good job of communicating with the public that there are new polling places, now the question is hopefully people. Are paying attention, but if they're not, I just wanted to make sure we got that out there, that there are new polling places. This year there are three locations, so make sure that you take a look at, most likely you got a card in the mail. Um, and then just for the councils, you know, we've begun interviews um for new HR director, as you know, Brenda's return at the end of. August and we're in that process and hopefully we'll have somebody selected by end of the month, so. That's it for me.
Well, I did get a card in the mail and I can tell you precinct one goes to the tech college. That's where.
I'm glad you were looking, so.
So, um, actually, I know we do have a uh spot open on the cl- planning commission. One of our commissioners' time is up and he's not going to re-up, so. We will have an opening on the planning commission, so if there's anybody out there that wants to be on the planning commission. Come on in and get a app- application and we'll take a look at it. Um, the other thing, I I got a little letter in the mail, of course. It hasn't, wasn't signed by anybody, no return address, uh, kind of talking about, uh. We have a couple hoarder houses in town, there's stuff, so, um, I. Kind of communicated with Chief Jefferson and and Mark here, um, that, uh. There's not much we can really do about them, but uh, Mark, you kinda wanna touch on it a little bit?
Sure, um, so generally, the the city has the power to take care of nuisances that. Affect the community as a whole, so if there's a condition in town that, um, affects a large number of people, let's say there was a. Um, a chemical spill or if there was a loud noise emanating from. A factory for a duration of time, um, or some other toxic thing going on, the city has the power to. Um, take legal action to try to stop that nuisance, um. Our code has a couple of different provisions as far as, um, unsightly properties. Um, other conditions maintained by homeowners that, um, are specific to those ordinances. That allow uh law enforcement response to um try to remedy those situations via the criminal system. Um, I think that, um, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for bringing these properties to our attention. And I guess I would invite anyone that has a concern about, um, nuisance property conditions to contact. The city and hopefully also identify yourself, um, so that we can communicate back to you about what's being done. With regard to your concern, under Minnesota law, um, names of people that make complaints about properties must be kept as confidential. So there's no danger of that information getting out, at least from the city standpoint. Um, but with regard to these properties, Mayor, I think that there has been a response from Chief Jefferson and perhaps he can talk about what's. Been done.
And and I'll just add, you know, from a staff's perspective, you know, this has been the philosophy of the city, we are more reactive than we are proactive. When it comes to public or nuisance properties, and what I mean by that is that we, we do a lot of our investigation based off of complaints. Um, now, there's two ways that you can do it, you can do it like that, or you can do it where we go out and you inspect all the properties in town. Um, and, you know, and that that's not what we do, we don't have the staff for that, so generally most of our nuisance complaints are handled by. Complaints, so I would say if if you see a property and it hasn't been addressed, most likely there hasn't been a complaint filed. Um, so that's where I think a little bit of our frustration is when you get an anonymous letter, because a lot of times we'll fall up with you and say, hey, thanks for bringing to our attention, or. Just so you know, these are the actions we've taken place, or maybe it's in the process of uh of being addressed. So I've just always encouraged people, as Mark noted, that if they do file a complaint, if they do call us, that information's private, we can't share that. Um, with people, so if they're worried about, I I'm having a thought complaint, but I want my name getting out there, your name won't get out there.
Right, and and another good reason to have your name attached to it is so we can also explain why it is we're not doing something. Or why we can't do something, um, you know, a lot of these instances and under Minnesota law, um. There there's a specific statute that's entitled, um, private nuisance actions. Where a person has the ability to start an action against someone else, for example, their neighbor on their own. Um, because in many instances, those nuisances only affect that neighbor or a couple of neighbors. Um, and as I mentioned before, our primary function as a city is to try to eliminate nuisances that affect the community in general. Um, I know a lot of times people don't like to hear that because obviously they're seeing dollar signs by having to hire their own attorney or take their own legal action. Filing fees, things like that, um, but that always is an option.
Okay, thanks again, um, as the comp- or city attorney alluded to, we have taken action on both of those properties. That uh that complaint came in, uh, one of them has been cited, it's been cited before, we'll cite him again, um, but that's one of the frustrations that we have is. We can take legal action against them, which is a misdemeanor violation, um, and it takes a while to get through the court system, especially. In days like today, um, however, we like to take a better, normally, I shouldn't say it's better. A different approach where we work with, normally we work with the property owner, um, our code enforcement officer may have numerous conversations and. And ultimately gives a reasonable timeline, that doesn't, it, a lot of times that doesn't uh solve the problem, give them another reasonable timeline. But eventually the property does come with into compliance, um, um, Matt was right. Um, most of our response is reactive response, cause quite frankly, um. We could have three or four employees, that's all they do is work on code enforcement, um, and I. You can make the argument that that's not maybe the proper use of police resource or those resources. But we have taken action with a citation on one of them and the other one, uh, the, you know, renter of that. Specific spot has removed the, at least the majority of the stuff that was outside, be- has come back into compliance. Um, kind of the other thing with the hoarding is, we have taken action in the past, um, when the house becomes uninhabitable. And that's usually when it's a public safety issue, either to the person or a public health uh situation, and we have done. Those types of things, but again, trying to get those people to come into compliance is pretty difficult without other professional help. And, um, and then that, it's getting other agencies within the system involved uh to make that happen, so. I guess I, that's probably a a longer answer than you needed, but that's really what, I mean, it it's six months to a year, to a year and a half sometimes. Um, I will also say that the council has the authority to to speed that up, but I think we've all been on the same page. I- in the past that we want people to come into compliance somewhat voluntarily, rather than the city coming in. And throwing all their their possessions in the dumpster and then billing them for it later, um, so. But it is possible.
Yeah, a- and I can say, you know, we've had, I know there there's properties, I know Mark and I, comes to our mind where it took. Four to five years for it to come into compliance because they were contending court orders. And so I think people, that's why, you know, it's like, we, I don't mind the letters, but that's where I I appreciate the name and the number on it, because we can let you know, hey. We're in the middle of year three of a court case, trying to get this property fixed, just so you understand what's, you know, what we're trying to do here from a. A staff's perspective, a lot of times it's not that, but we have had cases like that where we spent multiple years trying to get a property cleaned out, so.
Well, I know in our ordinance, I actually printed the thing, it it interested me and I printed it off and it's like, if we wanted as a city to get on this. That would take a lot of people, cause there's, it's pretty specific, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could be nabbing everybody for. And all of a sudden you guys, you'd have no policeman, cause they don't.
And you probably have a council chambers full.
Uh, that that was when I was in conversation with these three gentlemen, it was like, this is kind of a slippery slope. Where, where do you start and then where do you stop?
Right.
And I I don't, I don't wanna be the one. Doing that, so.
The one, the one thing that always always concerned me about people who are hoarders, as they call them. Is if, if we can see what is in on the outside of their home. I'd be concerned about their safety also on the inside of their home, I mean, how do you get? An emergency crew in there, a fire department, I mean, I know that for a fact, I lived next to one and. It took a fire to actually remedy the problem.
Well, Mayor, that gets into another point, because we don't do home inspections unless it's a rental property. Or if they pulled a permit for a specific. And you know, and so a lot of that is, we don't really have any right to go into that, that particular property, take a look at something like that either.
I guess the, just the last thing I'll say about identifying yourself when you have a complaint, it also helps us when we actually does get into the court system where. We can give a, an, how that's impacting you, you know, as a community, it maybe doesn't impact the community. But if you can actually give specifics about how three neighbors are being impacted by their blight. Or there's the condition of their home, then that helps the judge make a decision to one way or the other too.
Like you're kind of saying, it it it's, you know, my home value is less because of this house next to me. You know, so.
I can't, can't keep up with the rats.
But, thank you, gentlemen, hopefully that clears stuff up for for the public. But like, uh, like they said, if if you do have a complaint, please. Put your name and number down so we can at least get back to you that we are working on it, so. Otherwise, that's all I had, so let's adjourn and go home. Motion by Chad, second by Pat to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, thanks.